Morning, everybody.
Morning.
It's January the 23rd. Regular meeting, Commissioners Court, Liberty County, Texas. It's about nine oh four. And uh. Call this meeting to order. The records show we do have a full quorum today. Commissioner Karpowski is here, Commissioner Whitmire. Commissioner Wilson is with us by way of today. So if we would all rise, can you lead us?
Please face the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, where my nation under God, in its whole liberty and justice for all. Please face the. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, one state, under God, one and one in the Constitution.
If y'all would pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for each and every day that you you wake us up. Let's put our feet on the floor. Get up and Lord, I hope that everyone offers their praises to you for another opportunity. An opportunity to to work together, to live together. An opportunity to do the right thing. Lord, thank you for getting us this far through this month, through this first part of the year, 24. Be sure. Pray that you will be with us through the rest of this year. We have so many things that are going on, not just locally, but in the world. Lord, thank you for our first responders. We can't thank you enough that they will come out in inclement weather. That they will come out in any weather, for that matter, Lord, that they're there always to help us, to make sure that we're safe. For our men and women in uniform, Lord, thank you for them. And please be with them and give them your grace and your blessings and bring them home. Lords, we make our way through this meeting today that I pray that you will be with each of us as we had the opportunity to look over the business of the county. May we make the right decisions and may every decision we make be in glory to you. In your most precious son's name, Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Well, in the. Item of notices and proclamations, D D, I don't have any notices or proclamations that I didn't come across the desk this week or last week. A public comment, I don't have anyone to sign up for public comment as well. Please note that if you have any comments, if we've been to get to an agenda item that you might like to make a comment on, you are more than welcome to. Any conflicts of interest today, we need to declare it. Leon, you good on conflicts of interest today?
We do.
Except that Cowboys football game is going.
Yeah.
Pretty much it.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move on down to the consent agenda. Do we have any add-ons today?
Yeah, we have one budget amendment, precinct two, old bridge, precinct other eight, town twenty thousand, road material twelve thousand. Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
You getting ready for mine?
I do, thank you. I have a payoff for the tax department employee to be paid for eight hundred forty dollars and sixty thousand.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda along with the add-ons.
All right, motion second. To approve the consent agenda would be noted add-ons. Any further discussion?
Um, yeah, what's the person's name? Tiffany Meg.
Hearing no further discussion, call for a vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Moving on to the regular agenda. Mister C is first on deck today. And consider and approve the selection of liability insurances at the renewal date of February the fifth, twenty twenty four. Including general liability, all bill liability and fiscal damage property, contractor equipment, local entity management liability, employment practices, law enforcement. Liability, uh, employment benefits plan, administration liability and cyber crime liability and the umbrella coverage inclusive.
Yeah, I put a lot of stuff on there, but I think we don't, I think we stopped doing the umbrella coverage, but whatever you have on that.
Yeah.
Handout from the grid. Uh, I just want to say that, you know, we've had travelers for several years, have real good relationship with them, they did some great jobs. Uh, and they sent us a non, notice of runs, non-renewal. But Ben spent a lot of time with them because of our relationship, how long it's been, probably got a quote from him, but he'll, he'll tell you about it.
Okay.
So I handed out some, has TPS at the top. It's Texas political subdivisions, they have, they carry our workers' comp now. Uh, it's a pool, it's cities, counties, school districts and colleges. And they have, uh, according to Ben, they have a really good program. You see on the last sheet, uh, talks about their loss control, all the things they'll do, they'll come out, they'll give you a report of things they see. They'll help train you in safety training, if you get together, safety program, I mean, they do a lot of things for you. And I think they'll fit better with us because we're governmental than than travelers is. But we have Ben Odom and Todd Arnold are gonna come run you through.
All right. Yeah, he's up here, so Greg can hear you and Leon can see you.
Good.
Let's get in a little bit more. I gotta get you up.
There you go.
Thank you all for having us today. Um, I give you all this document every year in six fifteen and I'll just, I'll walk through it's a lot of numbers. So the first column, that's just the description of the coverages. The second column is twenty fifteen, that just shows you what was, what was our program in twenty fifteen. That's been the reference state that we had the last nine years. And what you'll see in twenty fifteen, we spent eight hundred forty thousand, our, our cost of insurance per thousand dollars of budget was twenty one dollars and sixty nine cents. The thing to reference there is at that time, the county did not purchase the insurance on the jail. So that's the one thing that really in here that um, that's developed over the last few years.
Well, we also didn't have as many employees.
Exactly right. So the budget in twenty fifteen was almost thirty nine million, we had ninety seven officers, two hundred seventy employees, twenty three autos. And then when we move over to twenty one three, basically the county doubled and tripled in certain areas. And the total premium last year was twenty three five million. And what costs per fifty dollars of budget was nineteen thirty one, again, that includes the jail operations. This blue column is what we call the flat rate column. What this does is this takes all of your updated exposures, which are up there at the top. So our budget's up eight percent, our law enforcement account is up one percent, our accounts are three percent, power units, four percent. Uh, insured values for vehicles is up twenty two percent, property is up five percent. So it takes the individual rates for um, for the twenty twenty three raise and applies it to the twenty four exposures to determine what is our insurance premium supposed to be if our rates don't change, right? So we have one auto, we know our premium is X, if we add another auto, we understand that our premium doubles in that case, but what was our rate? If we can't control this blue column, this is purely growth of accounting. What we can try and control is what are the rates that we get out of the insurance companies when we're going out for the procurement process? So overall, the premium, the renewal premium is one point four nine, it's a three percent increase. And it's still an eight percent decrease from twenty twenty five, I mean, from twenty fifteen. And I don't know of anything that you can buy today at another service that's less today than it was in twenty fifteen, so we feel good about that. Uh, the components that will require our rates increasing, one, property insurance is just very, very tough right now. We have had some property claims recently, um, and just in general, even if you haven't had a claim in ten years, your, your property rates are going up, whether it's personal insurance or commercial insurance. The other component is there, there's been, twenty twenty three was a tough year for, for claim activity, it was about nine hundred thousand dollar worth of claims. So a three percent increase on nine hundred thousand dollars claims seems like a pretty good deal that the market's bearing. And as Harold said, TPS is a great firm. Uh, we actually do the reinsurance behind them, so we're very confident in their ability to pay claims, service their accounts, and we know that they're, they're financially stable and viable. As Harold mentioned, there is a change, so last year, y'all historically carried an umbrella, we no longer have to have an umbrella now. So we just have three million dollars of limits for our law enforcement and our public officials and employment practices. So that's an improvement in coverage there. About two million dollars more of coverage. Um, the debt is also outside of it, so it doesn't erode our limit there. So those are some positives. Uh, the change in deductible for the auto is we're, we're going back to what our deductible was in twenty fifteen, which this year is, because of fifty thousand dollar auto liability. That's how we were able to keep that premium play down. Because the carriers were, were upside down in the auto, so that was the trade off there. We can get loss control in here, control our losses in a better way. We'll actually be able to realize a gain versus just giving money to an insurance company and paying a premium every year just to have lower looking. So we feel good about that. Wrap our problems around safety and loss control, if you claim down, premiums down.
Okay.
The flat rate is travelers?
The flat rate is not an option, that's an illustration.
Oh, that's an illustration.
And what would our rates be if, what would our premium be if rates did not change up?
So travelers didn't like this year.
So travelers originally non-renewed and we were able to bring them back to the picture, however, their terms. Um, deductibles were higher and that premium was, was more of a one point seven. So it just, they're getting out of the Texas county business right now, everybody's scared of jail exposure and. And I want.
Y'all have any questions? Leon, got any questions? That is what it is, so speak.
Make a, increase, make a motion to approve the TPS. I mean.
We got a motion for Bruce. He might want to make a second. Taking from Greg, is there any further discussion? Two, none, call for a vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all, gentlemen, appreciate it. Yes, you haven't noticed your home insurance going up and or your liability insurance, you better go take again. Yeah, I think it's, we do pretty well considering. Okay, number eight, two. Um, vote from Ellison Development, y'all come on up and visit, Dennis. Um, this is a presentation. Give you a chance to meet these folks and ask questions if you have questions.
Not smart.
And uh.
I'm struggling on that, you just stand over me. So like playing.
There you go. Anyway, this presentation, this information only in this cause, that uh, discussion concerning the proposed P I D, which is a public improvement district. And uh, it's another tool in the box, you know, for developments, okay? And uh, anyway, they want to uh, toss this out there to see how the Commissioners Court feels about entering into any kind of P I D group. So if y'all wouldn't introduce yourselves, everybody in the whole world know who you are, because you're on YouTube, brother.
Commissioners, morning. We appreciate the opportunity to come talk to you guys about our proposed P I D and our development in Commissioner Whitmire's district or precinct. Um, what we're here to discuss is.
Did you name for the record?
Oh, Russell Byrd with Ellison Development. It's B I R D.
Okay.
Scott.
Hi, Scott McGinn with Hall Hill and Associates, some consultant, working.
With our P I D consultant. Keep us out of trouble.
Mike Wilson with Ellison Development.
And how do you spell your last name?
B A N.
B A N, okay, all right, Judge Roy B, got you, all right, yeah.
So summarize what we're proposing is a cash flow pit, which familiar. It doesn't require the county to hold bonds. It just reimburses us over a twenty one year period for infrastructure development in our subdivision. It's like a mud, except it goes away and the tax rate is only about half of what is allowed in the mud district. So it's very similar, it's just a tool to reimburse the developer for some of his infrastructure costs.
Uh, what, what percentage will y'all be capturing on the taxes?
What percentage? It's not really, it's.
No.
Not really, not the, the amount of infrastructure.
Yeah, the tax rate, the tax rate.
Uh, the tax rate is proposed at the equivalent of a seventy five cent tax rate on a two hundred thousand dollar home, which is equals a fifteen hundred dollar a year payment for twenty one years. It never goes up and it never goes down and amortizes, just like a home, which, which is an advantage to the, the home buyer, they have some certainty with regard to the pay. And I like it, but we're not selling bonds.
Right.
We're just taking, we're putting all the infrastructure in upfront, spending all the money that it takes to do that. Reimbursed over twenty one years for that, unlike mud where they sell bonds.
Yeah.
And we don't get money. That would require the county to be involved in the buy sale, we're not proposing that, this is a cash flow pit, much simpler. Less expensive, no twenty percent overhead for bond sales and attorneys and all that kind of stuff, so it's much simpler. And of course.
Exactly. David, David, where's, where is this exactly?
Harvest acres.
I'm sorry?
Harvest acres.
You gonna give him a location on the map where Harvest Acres is located?
Well, it's uh.
East River Road.
East River Road, off Fifty Nine.
East to Fifty Nine, about what, a mile?
Probably.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Um. The P I D versus the mud or versus even any other tools in the box, why a P I D? Just out of curiosity, I'm not knocking you, but the public would like to know, they need a good explanation.
Um, well, I, I think, Scott, why don't you talk about the difference and why?
Well, the, the P I D is certainly more favorable for the, for the home buyer.
Hmm.
There's no debt issues, there's no unlimited tax rate pledge. Um, and the, the way we set it up, the way we're working with Ellison is to do straight cash flow, a principal amount levy per lot in the assessment. It's payable at any time or you pay annually over the twenty one year term and it's a leveling payment. So when the home buyer goes into the sales office, they, it's presented to them, it's disclosed. And they can make an informed decision whether they want to sign on to that fifteen hundred dollar a year payment with the certainty of knowing that it's never getting included. So that's a decision point for them.
Yeah, it goes away after the.
One question.
Like the mud, it just hangs around forever.
Yeah.
And always has a tax rate, this goes away, so that's one of the advantages.
This is kind of Mr. Rogers moment. Say for instance, the P I D is paid off at an earlier date.
Yes.
That can happen.
Yes.
So it goes away then, so instead of a twenty one year period, it could be even, yes.
Certainly.
Okay. And overall, but you're still looking at a twenty one year period regardless?
Yeah, at least, it's twenty one, the term for each property owner is twenty one years, so if there's a five year build up period, the P I D's gonna go on for twenty six, twenty seven years.
Yeah, okay. That's what folks like to know, it's inquiry minds, you know.
And I'll give you some examples, we have, we have a dozen of these in Colorado, got nine or ten in Tommo. For some reason, nobody pays off the P I D in Colorado, but lots of people pay off their P I D, principal, Tommo, and then they're cut out, they, they never get another bill. It's, it's, so if they have the ability, five years in, they make the principal payment that they're welcome to, we have, by, by the state statute, we have to give them that information to pay it off. And then they get wiped off the wall.
Yeah, it's different between a bunch of old farmers and. And city folks, okay, that are slowly becoming a city, you know. All righty. Give us a little idea about how large your development is.
Sure, no problem, it's gonna be about five, a little over five hundred homes. And um, it's about eighty three acres, I believe, maybe, about eighty three acre tract. It's gonna have um, urban gutter, concrete streets, uh, like a mud district would have, it's, it's gonna have all those, all the typical development. Um, and we've kind of been through all that with Commissioner Whitmire, but um.
What's your, what's your, uh, what's your lot size going to be?
Um, well, we're gonna, we're planning on um, thirties and forties by nineties and one twenties. And we're working through the county engineer right now with our planning and planning.
Yeah.
And we're gonna have, I mean, we've already sold an acre and a half to Splendor, new water plant site. They're gonna build a new well and an overhead storage there, we're in there, we're not in their ETJ, but we're in the water service area. So we would be using them for water and we'll have our own sewer treatment plant for the subdivision. And we're working with the next door neighbor who sold us a little tract for our outfall. Uh, we're gonna have retention, but we're also gonna have, well, we're gonna have retention and retention with decorative ponds. So on the ponds, um, and we'll have a park, trail system. And the trail system will also go around the pond and it's gonna have a gazebo and, and those kinds of amenities for the, and we'll have a small park for a playground type park also. And all that'll be tied together with our little trail system.
And the starting value of the homes is around three fifty, you think?
It'll be, that'll be on the higher end.
Higher end, okay. So that's higher end, where's the low end number?
Um, I would say two hundred. Two hundreds.
Yeah.
In that, in that ball.
And square footage size at the two hundred level?
Mike, if I had to guess, so it's a little bit, we used to be the home builder as well, but we've separated that out and someone else is purchasing lots. If I had to guess, I would probably say starting at eleven hundred square feet. Now, we'll say this, you know, like Mike said, we used to be ASG I homes, but we got bought by uh, D R Orton, the biggest builder in the country, a couple of months ago. So we've got a contract now with D R Orton supplying them lots in this subdivision, so they'll be the builder and of course, you know.
And this is all sticks and bricks, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All sticks and bricks, concrete streets, storm sewers, urban gutter.
Uh, post-entioned foundations, so fire heavens.
Yes, sir.
So this is only eighty three acres?
Thank you, thank you, Greg. Yeah, yes, sir.
How many of those, just trying to be the matter, eighty three acres with five hundred homes?
Thirty, thirty by nineties, we've been very successful with it in the middle of the town.
We're also coming up kitchen ponds, park.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, sir. I'd like to see the tide of this.
Well, we don't have a, we have a landmine for you.
First, remember, we're not voting on this today, we can't say for much of it, so.
Yeah, that's true.
That's preliminary landmine.
Preliminary, but if you'd like that, I'd like to. We'll take a peek at that. And of course, where you see in the, this is our, this will be our decorative pond.
This is detention, this is detention, this is our sanitary sewer treatment site, this is our water plant site.
This is.
We'll have two entrances.
This is the county road.
Yeah, two entrances off of uh, County Route Seventy. And then of course, the drainage will come, it's draining southeast, so we're, we're at our, after what's thrown off of this, right? Through here into our mud and then through here into the outfall, and this is also capturing everything that's flowing this way. On the east side, this will also bring down this pond, and we're capturing all the water coming off of us protecting our neighbor here. And then we've got an outfall down here in the creek, which we purchased from this same. Do you want to say it again?
Give our link in.
Yeah, we've got the subject, hey, I'm gonna be.
Any transportation impacts, traffic impacts?
We discussed that on the road, he's gonna pay the.
Yep.
Yeah, we're gonna pay them early, County Route Seventy from the county line.
Y'all love that, Davis.
I mean, he's tough.
Yeah.
He's tough.
He is.
Again, we've already been through two reviews, so we're on, I think we're on third review.
Brian, you got something else?
Yes, good answer. Um, basically, this is the stated request we've had from the P I D. Um, West Point, we're considering, y'all took some action on that early in the year, we're still developing that agreement. But I was able to visit with developers and programs and all meetings, but if y'all prove to go on with it, but. You're not, basically, we're allowing them to put a line on our tax, our consolidated tax statement. They're assessing some more taxing in the, in the county, so they have to bring, you know, the commissions into it. But it's not like the TURs where we're collecting the money and giving it back to them. The only one who's paying this is the homeowner that buys a lot in there.
And sadly.
They're the ones paying it. Our only involvement is we're gonna put a line on the tax bill. So they're gonna be another entity that we collect for, but really, it's not money that the county would have gotten anyway and you're giving back. So it's, it's not like you reimburse them, they're getting reimbursed by charging the people who built in their subdivision. So this twenty thousand dollar assessment plus interest gets added to each lot. Um, and I like this one compared to the West Point, because the West Point is variable, this one's laid out, you know, exactly from day one, what's gonna be added each year unless they pay it off. That's a lot simpler on our office, having to handle these, where they can change it each year, then you gotta find out what the county, you know, what the board wants to set this year, so it can change. I like, you know, the way they've laid it out as far as simplifying it, it's there. Um, on the concern side, it's a new, it's a new type of, it's not something that's there in our tax statement. But if they do a good job of explaining it to the homeowners who buy in there, that's gonna be part of their disloc, if they understand it is gonna be added to my tax bill. I don't have to explain it to someone who hasn't had that orientation. So that was some of my concern, but they kind of, through research in this, I noticed other counties are doing, they just add the lines. And like they said, if there's a question, we refer to their experts where they can talk to the homeowner and remind them, hey, you signed this when you closed the deal.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't need to be answering that quick, like, why is this fifteen hundred dollar fee added to my tax bill? First of all, these people never had a tax bill, they're a county, so it's gonna be clearly P I D payment, it's not gonna be an assessment through truth and taxation and all the things that we typically do. So it's a whole different vehicle. My understanding is, the county, even though they have to agree to the assessment, I think you still need to develop a contract with them, like we have with all our entities, the right to collect their taxes on their behalf. So that's something we have to develop that's unique compared to the ones we do now, because the one we do now addresses a lot of different elements. This, this is kind of, you know, in some, some tax offices have charged an additional fee for some of the software they had to develop or some of these things. I haven't really even looked into that to see, I have to talk to our software provider to see if they're gonna charge us anything. To me, it shouldn't charge, it shouldn't cost us anything.
Yeah.
We're gonna collect our typical, which you do right now, you collect a partial fee. Right now is what we charge, thirty two cents for a part of the fee. So I assume on these five hundred lots, I'm not, I'm not trying to negotiate upfront, but that's typically, if we did our typical contract, it'd be thirty two cents times the five hundred lots or, or whatever. And that would be their annual fee that they would pay for us to do this. And all we're simply doing is adding the lines and then sending the money back to them through an ACH, just like we do all the other entities.
Well, I'll, of course, reinforce to the court that um, you know, the county will still, will be getting the additional revenue on the five hundred houses that come in. But in the P I D, the tax rate that's established on each house, each lot is the same on each lot. Even, let's say you buy a two hundred thousand dollar house, that's what the tax rate's gonna be. If you buy a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, you're still gonna pay the same, it's not anymore, so. It's not anymore. So it's, it's based on, it's not variable. It's not based upon the, the upper amount. It's based on the lower amount. The county will still be getting its taxes, you know, standard taxes from our, from the, from the houses. And it won't cost. Scott, can you talk to them about the fee that you just raised?
Sure. And there, there won't be an agreement between Liberty County and the developer. They just laid out the roles and responsibilities. And that's one of them is that, you know, if the developer performs, puts in the infrastructure, that the county will establish the PID, collect it, and will establish a revenue account to reimburse the, the development.
And will give the.
Yeah, they'll get a standard fee.
Standard fee per lot, for, for doing that work.
So that's something y'all would develop for us to consider.
We're right. We'll, we'll have a development agreement with the county if, you know, you guys approve this. Uh, you know, we'll have a PID agreement. You guys all approved, creating, creation of the PID. And then we'll have our attorney. You guys won't have to draw, you know, spend attorney fees. We'll do that to draw up an agreement. Of course, you guys get to review it, of course, and the county attorney, if you want, review the agreement.
Oh, they will.
Yeah. I'm sure. But that's expected and we're, you know, we'll, we'll put the bill on that.
Okay. Okay, Andrew, you have any questions?
Not yet.
I'm sure, but I will at some point, yes.
Well, we brought a engaged commissioner's summary of the PID, which you won't review.
Great, thank you.
If you have no questions or anything.
Absolutely, thank you.
So very all of the questioning is sort of a blessing on moving forward with our PID. We still have to create a document.
Right, there, it has to be a public hearing. The petition presented, two resolutions passed, and then the PID would be created. And I think at that time, the development agreement would be presented as well.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, we're not really voting on anything, Dave, except for.
Give us a blessing, yes.
That's pretty much it, yes. Yes, any more questions, Bruce?
No.
Gosh, I may as well just go ahead and ask, Lee, and you have any other questions?
Well, a couple, but yeah, I'm gonna wait till they come back. So are we gonna take no action on this one? Is that?
Well, it's, it's not, it's not an action item. It's just information only.
Okay.
But if you would like, we can.
Um, I mean, just a quick look, it's like, I mean, this is what this is called, because I'm researching while you're talking. It's a public improvement district. That's what the PID is.
That's right.
Uh, it is described in chapter 372 of, I think, the Texas Local Government Code, is what I saw. Um, so for more information, that would be the place to go. And it sounds interesting. So it'll be our first one, right?
And Lee, if you didn't get a copy of.
Yeah, I need a copy for the record.
Yeah, it's a summary of exactly how it works and what we're doing.
Yes, please.
We love to include all these acronyms in here, so.
Oh, I'm a, I'm a big, you know, I hate them, but I'm still on our engineering. Quit using them.
Yeah.
I write for the public posterity, though, and they're not gonna know. I mean, right down the line here, you've got PIDs, which are property identity numbers. We just don't want to use it, but I was not explaining that, so that's all good.
I mean, so I guess what we're looking for is just sort of a blessing of move forward.
Pretty much, but we don't have it as an action item today. But as far as I think general consensus, it is, let's see the next step.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure you got a little bit of law enforcement and fire stuff to go in here to develop. Absolutely. Streets, streets will be wide enough, all the fire hydrants and outside two entrances that are, they're separate case on the blocks.
Yeah, well, you can look through the plan absolutely, get that set going back. No problem. Okay.
Okay. Moving on to 83. From Ms. Bourbon. District Attorney, considering approval of the request from the District Attorney's Office to apply for a continuation of the grant for Victim Assistance Coordinator through the Office of Governor, Criminal Justice Division for the years of 2024, 2025. Grant number is 2876608. Uh, Jennifer's not here. Anybody? All right. Laurel, come on up and visit with us, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are y'all?
Good.
Good.
Good. My name is Laurel Goodwin. I'm a Victim Assistance Coordinator with the Liberty County DA's office.
Okay. So.
Jay.
Hey.
I don't think this Texas Rockets side just figured this out. I approve this, this measure.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
I was gonna give you opportunity if there's any questions that you want to ask.
Yeah.
Next, we have.
Pretty well.
Okay. All right, we got a motion from Leon and second from Bruce to approve. Laurel, you don't even have to say a word. Even though we were gonna give you the opportunity, believe it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All the favors say aye. Likewise, nays and most agrees. Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you, Abby. Uh, 84 from Mr. Gott, consider and take action to appropriate $200,000 to each road and which precinct of unallocated ARPA funds. Uh, we've discussed this. We have some.
We'll walk down to 300.
No, 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 it's 200,000.
You're just gonna give me your 200, wasn't you?
Boy, y'all don't wanna be talking about any more money. It, uh, we have, we're getting down to the last, come and get me on some of the funding on this ARPA money. And we're trying to leave enough in there for a just in case. So, and say, for instance, on the Northwest Annex Building, there's any cost to it, whenever we get our final numbers. Our anticipation is through that, they, and, you know, we're leaving enough in there to make it forward in case we have to. But we do see a hole in the line. If it was a Cowboys, I'd say for sure that's true. That we can run through and you can get 200,000 each now. And we'll still.
Approve this.
Still give it. Yo, I know you will. Well, I'm not gonna talk about it any longer. Yeah. You got a motion from Greg to approve. Got a second from Leon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All the favors say aye. Well, that was the easiest one I've had all year. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, size from Mr. Gott. Consider approving payment of 600,000 to Tri County Behavioral Healthcare from interest revenue earned from the ARPA funds. And that's just what it is. It, uh, when we received our funding, we did earn some interest money and Tri County had requested some funding. And we were, you know, in ways to get it to them. And this is pretty much the, yeah, clean as it can be.
Making motion to approve, sir.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All the favors say aye. Well, as I say, is that motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. From our friends over at Lime Barbers Tax Attorneys, consider to approve bids on delinquent tax properties as follows. Uh, number one is Lehman, but property ID is 102895, $1,000. Number two, Shay Davis, number is 141966 for 2,550. Next one is Davis also, 141965 for $2,500. Uh, four is Childress, PID number 64316 for 2,550. And Lewis is number five, PID number 34061 for 15,000. Must be a nice piece of property. Has everyone had the opportunity to look over these?
Yes, looking over these, uh, looking at the numbers of the recovery on it. And previously, we kind of are letting these properties go back for about nothing. But the way that they're selling out here on courthouse steps indicates a high demand for this land. I make a motion to deny one, two, and three and approve four and five.
Second. Motion from Bruce, second from Leon. To deny one, two, and three, but approve numbers four and five. Any further discussion?
I would like Lime Barbers to, with the court's approval, to see about putting some of this property back on sales, because we get a lot better result on these properties selling out here on this courthouse step than we do here in this court.
Good deal. Okay, we do have a motion, do have a second on the action for at least four and five. Uh, call for a vote. All the favors say aye. Likewise, nays. And that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Uh, eight, seven, for Miss Inspections from Ms. Soliday. Consider to approve the acceptance of the Southern Cross subdivision, section five and six roads into county maintenance, release a maintenance bond. I'm sure, Belinda, you probably had a chance to talk to David.
Well, actually, we did have an inspection back in July with LGA. And the roads were good. We were, just had some minor issues in section six with some street signs. That has since been rectified. I conferred with Commissioner Whitmire, and I'm going to bring yours.
Okay. Then make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from David, second from Bruce to approve. Any further discussions? Hearing none, call for a vote. All the favors say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carried. Bruce, you want to make the motion?
Second motion, no doubt.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. All the favors say aye.